I'm Tom Gaynor, I'm the Chairman of the Lakeport City Planning Commission. And tonight we had three major objects coming before us. One was a remodel of a building going in for Kathy Fowler Chevrolet, which was approved. The second was a fence variance, which we determined had to be adjusted and then it was approved. And the last one was to look at doing an ordinance or ordinance for outside eating at restaurants downtown, in which we gave different opinions and things that we would like to see so that those outside eating areas don't encumber traffic, pedestrian traffic going through. The regular meeting, Wednesday, September 9th, 2015, by the Lakeport, City of Lakeport Planning Commission. Do you want to call the rule?
Commissioner Wick?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Copper? Absent. Chair Gaynor?
Here. All right. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Honorable Chair, my motion, we accept the agenda as it is posted this evening.
Do I have a motion by Commissioner Taylor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wick's. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto the consent calendar. Who's Dan or Kevin tonight? Before we get to that.
Consent, I'm sorry. I did change, you see, very good. I changed some of the agenda stuff around a little bit, I've kind of moved up towards the end, so I apologize for that.
That's all right. Okay. Okay, so consent calendar. Do I have any, does anybody else want to say about changes first?
Well, Honorable Chair, there's, in the minutes of June 24, there are several typographics, so I'm not sure what everyone else has marked down, but if you...
Go ahead and start yours.
Okay, so on page one, fourth paragraph, under comments from staff and commissioners, third sentence from the bottom of that paragraph, the word "keep," I believe should be stricken from the sentence. To read, the commissioners agreed they would like to be informed of what projects are taking place in the city.
Captain or?
Captain. Or captain, whichever, whichever, the word itself isn't correct, so if that would be fixed, that'd be great. I have nothing on the second page, does anybody have anything on the second page? On the third page, second paragraph, the first correction would be the word "mark." Sentence reads, the first was on page 25, item number three, and then in that point right there, I believe a word "of" should be inserted, number three of the architectural and design review checklist, which was, and the word there is "mark," I believe that should be marked? Yes? Should be marked, no. And then following that, the next sentence, the second change was on page 29, the header section, and I believe in this portion should also include the word "of," section "of" the initial study checklist. That's all I have on that page. Does anybody have anything else? Page four, first sentence, when stated there were discrepancies on the actual size of the project, the next two words would be, this doesn't make any clarity to the sentence, I don't know if that should be stricken. Fifth paragraph, second, the last sentence states, well, let's just go, just go the third, third line from the bottom of that paragraph, commissioners are being asked to physically approve construction drawings, I believe the word "physically" needs to be stricken. Does anybody have anything else on that page?
They were just above that line, "as," should it not be capital?
Correct. Good catch. You're supposed to be doing this too, Commissioner.
Yeah, no, I, you do a great job.
Okay.
Page five, first paragraph, last sentence, this is basically the end of the second to the last, it says, "Process however the plans the commissioners have before them do no show," I believe that word is "not," "do not show" the changes. Fourth paragraph, first sentence, Commissioner Copper asked what Mr. Johnson, what the plan, so I believe the first "what" should probably be stricken. Have nothing on that, rest on that page, does anybody else have on that page?
On this, no, that's all I have.
Okay, and on page six, the fourth paragraph, third sentence, or third line of the paragraph, he is behind the project itself, but he with some of the items presented as conditions stating that they should be prior, the sentence is convoluted, and I'm not sure what the intent of the sentence is, so I'm not sure how to correct that, there's a couple of things in there. So, he is behind the project itself, but, and I would strike the words "he with," to read, he is behind the project itself, but some of the items presented as conditions, then striking the words stating that they, so the sentence would read, he is behind the project itself, but some of the items presented as conditions should be completed prior to the approval by the planning commission. And that's all I have. Other than that, I have no objection to the minutes of July 8.
Anybody else? All right. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes as adjusted?
Honorable Chair, I will make a motion to accept the minutes as adjusted and presented.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wick's, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Taylor, call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes. All right, citizen input.
Which, no requests, you said.
Okay. All right, going on to the regular calendar again, starting with AR 14-08, Kathy Fowler Chevrolet revisions. What are we doing? Kevin, are you doing?
I'm gonna just, gonna take this opportunity formally introduce Dan to the commission here as well. Dan Chance joined us approximately two months ago, but this is our first commission hearing in that timeframe. He comes to us from Grass Valley, as well as a number of other jurisdictions, with a tremendous amount of experience in many of the issues that we face here regularly in Lakeport, lots of design review experience, subdivisions, most residential and commercial, but very glad to have him, he's kind of taken on right away a lot of our current planning information stuff, we're dusting off a few items that have been sitting around for a while and starting to attend to those, so I'm very happy to have Dan Chance here with us, and he's the project planner for this minor modification, and we'll talk a little bit over the project.
Yes. Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, the project before you, the first item here for the regular calendar here, is a project that you previously approved on December 17th, 2014, for the Kathy Fowler used car lot. Basically, at that time, you approved a design, a architectural and design review application, AR 1408, and a use permit for selling used cars, use permit application 1402. The building permits and improvement plans were submitted to the city for review, staff review of the plans determined that the structure itself had changed pretty dramatically from what was originally approved in the last September hearing. So, since you have a good history of this project, I'll just kind of focus right onto the changes. And basically, check your plans, primarily, the project change, it was previously was approved as a curved structure on the front elevation, that has been changed to more of a square structure. And in addition to that, the project originally had a three-foot kind of eve hanging over the edges, now it has about a 14-foot eve going along over the front area with columns supporting that. Only that with the eve itself was expanded from two feet, that was approved, to about three feet wide, primarily the same materials, however significantly changed. The structure itself, by squaring out the corners, the size expanded from 547 square feet to 588 square feet. The windows in the original one were pretty much full-length windows, kind of going from window to window along the front edge, that has been changed to four windows in the front, and one window on each side. There is a, also added to it is, it's called a neolith surround, which is a fabricated ceramic stone, over the front door. So the changes, staff reviewed the plans, basically the colors, as part of your packet, you'll see the colors are matching what was basically the same as the Kathy Fowler dealership next door, the materials would be relatively the same with the metal materials, metal siding, or both, the parapet where it would be vertical, I mean, sorry, the parapet would be horizontal and the wall siding would be vertical. Staff reviewed the project, the project had originally 43 conditions, those conditions did require modifications, so those conditions would stand, and at this point in time, the project is still consistent with the objectives of the architectural and design review application criteria, consistent with the zoning, C2, major retail, hasn't changed anything significantly. The design, where they could reflect the harmonious design of the area, the design of the structure matches the Kathy Fowler building significantly, the project would be consistent with the general plan, compliments and adjacent land uses, and under the California Boundment Comptia Act, the project is categorically the same as what was originally approved with the original project. So, staff at this point in time would recommend that the planning commission approve the project subject to the two conditions, now this would also include the other 43 that were approved originally on December 17th, and approve the architectural and design review application for the modification, that's the staff recommendation. Did they already sign one prior?
Yes.
They did have?
Yes. They have, you got specific building plans.
Yeah, all right. Any commissioners, you got any questions, staff?
Well, actually, I think I like the square building, I did the rectangle shaped building anyway, I think it looks cleaner than what it is, I might pick it something that's better.
The first one?
Well, yeah, the first one, right, the square box.
The one they're submitting for right now?
Right.
Not the first one?
Oh, okay. The amended.
I actually think it goes better with Kathy Fowler's original than the other one, the other one had a little different flavor to it. Any others?
I only have a question as to the two conditions, it appears to me that they're virtually identical to the original 43, the first two.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering what, why these are included, what was the change in the first two conditions? Perhaps I'm not seeing it.
Basically, there's, because we have only two separate plans that are being approved, the actual plan that was approved on December 17th, and the modified plan, so we have to get a revised kind of condition compliance form to put in the file, it's more of a going to a process kind of thing than anything else. It verifies that they got approval September 9th for the changes.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, the date shows up in that second.
In the second one.
In the second one.
Yeah.
And the first one is identical, but it's a standard condition.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, appreciate it.
Anyone else? So we have a motion?
Just as a, a follow-up, just kind of a housekeeping issue, you may have noticed that I've played around a little bit with your formatting of your staff reports, one of the concerns I had coming in, and Dan kind of reiterated this, as far, kind of had a discussion with our city attorney as well, who kind of defined a little bit clearer in these reports, the specific findings that are necessary to be made, and also recommending that we break out your motions, to make a separate motion specifically for CEQA, and then hand you guys a decision on that, then go ahead and make a second physical motion for approval, so I know that's a little different than what we've done in the past, but that's your C, two separate motion recommendations, so.
All right, so the first one, categorical exemption, I have a motion, yeah?
I'll make a motion for a categorical exemption, and I did have a question, as far as the things that you just mentioned, Kevin, would those be considered modified project conditions?
Well, the two that Dan referenced, that we're adding to those as modified project conditions, but they're on a separate condition.
Oh, okay, so we have to do it this twice?
You would just, what I'm asking for is a, that you first read the motion for the categorical exemption approval?
Okay.
And then handing the outcome of that one, if you guys agree with staff's decision on that one, then you would make a motion to approve or deny.
Okay.
Which we should have been doing the whole time, because a lot of these projects that come forward are listed as categorical exempt, which is basically, you know, we're accepting that, we're accepting that fact without condition, so this way, we actually have to look at it.
Yeah, because I mean, technically, I mean, somebody could appeal either or, so that's kind of, I mean, they were wrapped all together, I don't, I think this is just a clearer.
Yes.
So we're basically requesting a categorical exemption approval.
Before we go to the next motion?
Right, and once that's, so if either one of us, or we deny the CEQA aspect of it, then the motion wouldn't necessarily work for the architectural design because of the issue with the environmental.
Because you potentially could perhaps be in favor of the project, but not believe that it...
Which is what just happened.
...qualifies for a categorical exemption.
That's right.
Right, so...
Lord.
Well, it'd have to be the other way around.
So you're doing the first one.
Okay.
Yeah, it would have to be the other way around, you have to.
I'm going to do part one, which would be the categorical exemption approval, I have, I move that the planning commission find that the revision to AR 14-08, as applied for by Kathy Fowler, categorically exempt pursuant to section 15303(c) of the CEQA guidelines.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Russell, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Commissioner Taylor, I think you want to call the rule?
Commissioner Wick?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Chair Gaynor?
Aye. And that one passes, and do I have a motion for the architectural and design review?
Honorable Chair, on the architectural and design review revision approval, I move that the planning commission find that the architectural and design review revisions applied by Kathy Fowler Chevrolet on the property located at 1077 Thurlow Drive, does meet the requirements of the section 17.27.080 of the Lakeport zoning ordinance, consistent with the objectives and policies of the Lakeport general plan, and the grant with the revisions of AR 14-08, subject to the modified project conditions of the approval, attachment A and with the findings that listed on the September 9th, 2015 staff report.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Taylor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Russell, do I think you can call the rule?
Commissioner Wick?
Aye.
Wicks.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Chair Gaynor?
Aye. And motion is passed.
I apologize for that, I guess I kind of doubled the work there too.
All right. Going on to F 15-03 slash C P 15-08, fence variance, Suzanne Russell?
Honorable Chair, I believe this is where Suzanne...
You're gonna need to...
I'm coming. Thank you. Very comfortable. Good evening, Commissioners.
We haven't opened the floor yet, you just have to step down. Just sit down, yeah, we have to open the floor, have a root, your...
Okay.
Okay. Dan, are you doing this one or staff?
This one's on me, I'll give you guys a quick report here, so, the applicant has recently constructed a six-foot tall wood fence at this property located at 606th Street, the parcel is a corner lot with frontage on both Sixth and Cherry Streets, the portion at front Sixth Street is set back a minimum of 25 feet from the property line, and is consistent with the setback requirements of the R1 low-density residential district. However, the portion of fence that fronts Cherry Street is located within the required 10-foot side street lot setback area, and as constructed, the fence is currently located five feet from the property line to Cherry Street. Additionally, the applicant is also seeking allowance for the construction of additional fencing five feet from the property line along Cherry Street to enclose an area in the rear half of the lot. Just a quick little background on here, on April 28th of this year, community development staff noted the construction of the overheight fence, and notified the contractor on site of the placement of fence within the required setback area. The contractor was informed that the fence would either need to be, one, relocated out of the setback area, two, reduced to a height of three feet, or three, that in application for a fence variance with the city, it would need to be submitted. The contractor stated that it was intended that the fence be placed outside the required setback area, but apparently an error had been made in assuming that the back of the curb represents the property line, but he would notify the property owner the situation. On April 30th, community development staff was surprised to note that despite the conversation April 28th, the fence had been completed without being relocated. A code enforcement case was initiated and staff provided a courtesy letter to the property owner notifying them of options for remediating the situation. As a result of that letter, a formal application for a fence variance was submitted to the community department of the county. The accompanying project description notes that the fence was constructed to provide a safe and private area for the children and pets of the residents of 606th Street, so that they could utilize the backyard of their property. The project description goes on to state the issue with aggressive dogs in the neighborhood, and this concern over general safety was further cited by the applicant as a reason why they went ahead and completed the construction of the fence, despite the knowledge that it was located within the required setback area of Cherry Street. Section 17.28.0100, the zoning ordinance permits fences up to a maximum of six feet height, a six feet height within the required front yard setback areas, with the approval from the planning commission, and based upon the findings that the fence will not create a substantial hazard to the public by recreating, by creating reduced visibility or sight distance problem, and that the proposed fence is aesthetically pleasing and does not contribute to a walled effect. As proposed, the fence does not create a substantial hazard to the public by creating reduced visibility or other sight distance problems, as the fence is located 20 feet back from the intersection of Sixth and Cherry Streets. It should be further noted that Cherry Street is a dead-end street, serving only three properties, and does not result in a large amount of daily vehicle trips. Adequate area for construction of sidewalk along Cherry also exists. Staff is also in agreement with the applicant's assessment that the fencing is attractive and does not contribute to a walled in effect. It should be noted that staff does believe that the project objectives to provide safety and privacy to the residents of the property could have been achieved without constructing into the required setback area. Nonetheless, this project does meet the required findings for the issuance of fence variance permit per the zoning ordinance, and staff recommends approval of this project. In addition to your staff report packet, the applicant also provided some additional information today that we also have provided to you there, there's an additional letter of support, a revised site plan, a listing of other overheight fences in the neighborhood, and a petition of support for the project. And the applicant is also available to answer any questions that you guys may have on this thing. Thank you.
Commissioner? Well, you know where I'm going to fall down on this, because I'm consistently about the rules. It shouldn't have been, I'm sorry, I love you to death, but right is right and wrong is wrong, and we have a fence post issued on Hartley and 20th, it still exists, those fence posts are still there. So, I read all of your information, and it's very sound, and the fence is beautiful, I just wished it had been back though, you know, and went informed, I think that was the opportunity, and I realize that the cost didn't have, but that's, you know, that's where I'm falling down, it's just by the book.
Rule? I've got one, and that's, if they were doing it, and we'll get it when we open the floor, we'll talk to the owner about, if they were doing it, if they were really worried about the dogs, they'd put it down on the ground. There's one portion of it there that's almost 18 inches up above the ground, which makes it almost seven and a half feet of a fence instead of six feet, and I, my son had a pit bull, I could think he'd just run right under that there, so it wasn't, or isn't constructed to keep the dog out, it is higher in the area we're giving approval for than six feet, so. It's right near where the...
Well, we can't...
Well, yeah, we can't do you until we open it up.
Okay.
But there's, right by the, what used to be a car park area or something, I've been there, where they've gone around a bunch of materials that are sitting outside the fence, built around it, so, yeah, I see, right in this area right here, the fence is way up over the six-foot area, they've got six-foot pickets on the fence, and then they've got about an 18-inch underneath, that, up to 18, 18's the largest that was there. If you guys don't have any more questions, now...
Not for, not for...
Yeah, okay, so I'll go ahead and open to the public, any, or public, and you can come up, again, if you would, just state your name, and I don't think we need to spell your last name, we already know it.
Okay, do you want me to answer the questions, or?
You can just state your name directly.
All right. Suzanne Russell?
Okay, go ahead and tell us anything that you want on that first, and maybe resolve some of this.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners and staff, thank you for considering my request for a variance and a categorical exemption for the fence at 606th Street. You have in your packet a detailed description of the redwood fence, and I supplied some better pictures. and I supplied some better pictures that I think are past along. Also, letters from the citizens supporting the fence for the reasons of safety of the children and privacy of the tenants, specifically due to fickle experiences they, the neighbors, and my family have experienced, which necessitated the decision to finish the fence against code recommendations. A petition I circulated, signed by sixty-six people, which is ninety percent of them live on Sixth Street, indicate their support of keeping the fence where it is and not having to move it four and a half feet to accommodate code requirements. A list of non-conforming fences, mostly on Sixth Street. I've provided a list of non-conforming fences mostly on Sixth Street and there's pictures that are circulating, establish that my fence is not setting precedents. I was absolutely amazed at how many fences and if I'd had another week or two, I could have listed quite a few more, but when my, I did not have a contractor build this. This is my tenant that did this because he was very concerned about the, the dogs that were roaming around. And I think in my letter, I specified that the two dogs were on my property alone, which I live up the street. And they chased my other half down the, down the stairs. He barely made it back into his office. So, when I did my petition, I asked the different people on Sixth Street if they'd had any interaction with the pit bulls and therefore you have a letter or two pertaining to their experiences with the pit bulls. And there was one lady who had her dog attacked by it, but I don't know that she wrote a letter about it. I didn't see that, anything about that. But as far as the notification, as far as code it goes, my, by the time I was told about the fence being out of code, it was, the cement posts were already done. They were done three and a half, three feet. And there was no way I could just pick up the fence and move it as suggested by the code enforcement. After it, prior to this fence being built, the tenants themselves had been camped at my house and they did call the police once. I'm not sure about twice. They can't track the dogs down. They are coming to my house to be able to call somebody at their house to see if the dogs are gone, just to be able to be in their own front yard. The house is a very large, it's a large house on a large lot. They used to, the house itself used to, the property would extend to the entire block, but they, prior owners have sold off different pieces of it. Finding out that it was against code and doing something about it instantly or, you know, I knew my options were to cut the fence down, which wasn't going to solve the problem, or move it, which I couldn't do immediately. And the other option was to come and seek a variance because this particular fence is, a small portion of it that's bordering Cherry Street. If anybody, I know Harold went to see the fence in Cherry Street. Did you happen to see it? Okay, you know that on the right-hand side, it services two, two people, two single people, both of which signed my petition, one of which wrote a letter definitely supporting the fence. She's been waiting for forty-three years to get a fence there. Anyway, I knew that I'd have to do the variance, you know, I knew that I'd have to apply for the variance and there was, you know, the main reason for it being completed and those words completed mean that the structure was already there when he was told about the fence post not being correct, in a correct position. The only thing that they did afterwards was put the fence boards up and that would prevent animals. That are coming down Sixth. They're not in the back end. And because it's on a very steep hill, that accounts for that one small spot that it is, it is higher. It's definitely higher. And that is, I don't know whether or not they've completed the wiring, we were going to put wire fencing there. Doesn't seem to be any issue back in the back. I mean, wire as far as that one small area that's sixteen. Everything else is complying. Actually, the front part of the fence, you can see that goes back thirty-five feet opposed to twenty-five that's required. So, other than that one small section on the far back of the property, which is, it's pretty far back. It's back where the old garage used to be. And not much happens back there except for my stuff and that's why I'm asking for a further variance to be able to finish off that front fence, the front of, to cover up that particular area that I use for storage for building materials. That's it.
Okay, any questions? And you're talking about maybe instead of it, or you're talking about keeping the other fence also that goes around those building materials?
Yeah.
And just putting a gate or something in the front then?
It's on there. It's on the paperwork.
Yeah.
Those two four-foot gates that I want, I need to be able to back a truck in there to load and unload that area. It's, it's an eyesight, I mean eyesore rather, it's horrible. I've covered different things up with tarps and things. It's still horrible. I'm picking off my points on the properties one by one, taking care of different issues and that's one of them and I'd like to be able to cover that up so that it, so people don't come to. There's nothing valuable there. It's just, it's just stuff. And I'd like to be able to close.
Okay. Any other questions for the area?
Yes.
So, are you building?
So, I understand your reasoning, but then looking at the timeline, you made it a conscious decision to go ahead and build it even after you were told that it was on the wrong side.
Right, it was already built. The structure was already there.
Well, maybe I have it wrong. I looked at the timeline that I have here is that on April twenty-eighth, we're notified, or the person who built it was notified. Two days later, contact was made on April thirtieth and that's when it was determined that the fence was one hundred percent complete. So, I'm a little confused. Were the fence posts in at the?
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-eighth and were all the boards up at that time on twenty-eighth?
Those, those.
Or were they built two days later?
No, they weren't. The only thing that was done later was the actual fence boards that.
Okay, so the fence posts were in with no boarding and no support. So.
The support was there. When you say support, you mean the?
Well, you support the fencing.
Frame. Oh, no, no.
It was just posts.
The posts and the frame were up and, because we did it pretty quickly because these events with the pit bulls happened pretty, pretty close. And after the experience at my own house, I thought, you know, I'm really grateful that it wasn't me that was running down those stairs with those dogs chasing us. And that's why I asked different people, you know, to substantiate the fact that it wasn't just my tenant and it wasn't just us that had had experiences with these dogs. And I'm basically terrified. I have two adopted cats and one rescued dog and they're tiny. And they just, you know, if those dogs got in there and got them, we still don't have a fence. We're one of the few people, I think a lot of people didn't have problems or hadn't seen the dogs because they do have fences. And, and that's why they're, they may or may not have had problems. And if you read the letter from Roger, he had a, he had a real interesting experience with those dogs and he says he hasn't seen them since. And, and we haven't seen them, but we, that may or may not be because the fence is up.
Well, I, I, I understand your justification. I do. And it's, it's well presented in your petition and all the folks that signed it. Obviously, there's a concern and you addressed that concern.
Well, if you are under the impression that, that we were told and then just completed it anyway, those, those posts were dug down and cemented three feet down and.
Regardless, regardless.
And not going to be moved overnight. And I knew that I had.
I understand and, and I'm not, I'm not going to, I won't conflict that point. I would just simply say that once informed, anybody, once they're informed of a violation, they, they have an opportunity to make a change. And there are several instances in this town where people have elected to do so. Some have it and we're, here we are. I don't want to get into the back and forth of why. I can explain it very clearly. I'm trying to justify my head a variance after the fact when it's, by my timeline, it really appears as if there was ample opportunity to move the fence. And I understand the cost. I do. And I'm just going to, I'm just only good at that. I guess I have a question about Cherry Street in general, you know?
It's not a street. It's a driveway.
Well.
If you look at it. I know it's listed as a street and it's ninety-one feet long and it's a dead end.
And so, if, if I may include Kevin in a question in this portion. What is the official, I mean, I've looked it up in the transportation and I've looked on the map. What is the official position of the city on Cherry Street's usability and future use?
Well, it was originally a through street going all the way to Seventh Street, but a portion of it was formally abandoned, so that back area is formally abandoned. So, I mean, it's essentially a dead-end street. The portion in front of this property at six hundred is public right of. I mean, it is, it is a dedicated street. So, I mean, it potentially, you know, but is there any future development potential beyond what's already built out there? No.
Right.
Not in its current state. I mean, I suppose somebody could take a vacation. I, I seriously doubt that we would see any, you know, action taken to make it a through street. Yeah, that is formerly abandoned and you can tell by the configuration of this lot that portions of that street are now private property to all the, I think, three or four pieces of property that individuals attracted itself.
Right.
It's, it's a dead-end street.
It's a dead-end street that's approximately a hundred and twenty feet from Sixth Street to the north, roughly?
I measured ninety-one.
Is it ninety?
Yeah, it's, when you look at the, the configuration of the six hundred lot, which I believe how deep is it?
That's the lot?
Yeah.
It's, it's a hundred and six, I believe.
It's a hundred and six and, and I know that.
That's way past the street.
Cherry Street doesn't run all the way.
Right.
So, ninety-one feet.
Probably pretty accurate.
So.
It's partially paved as well.
So, it, the street being a dead end, unpaved part of it, no curb or sidewalk.
There, there's a curb.
One curb, no sidewalk. And likely not to be reintroduced as a through street. Essentially makes this a parking lot, so to speak.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I think.
Twenty-four feet wide.
When you look at its use of it, I mean, it kind of dead ends it.
It dead ends and it's.
It's a personal driving.
Personal, right, right. Not to excuse, by the way, what we're looking at here. I'm just trying to get some clarification on the property itself. If there were to be a variance granted, I'd like to know that the street itself is not going to be impacted by any future development. So, okay, so express yourself very clearly about that. To the chairman's point of regarding the height of the fence, I too measured the fence and it is above six feet.
On the back end?
It is.
That one small section.
Well, yeah, and if you measure by the diagonal as you go down, there's a few places where it exceeds it because the way that it.
Goes like this, yeah.
Right, the topography, right? So, you have to look at topography when you're doing a fence. You can't just square it off and, so.
By the same token, we document it, did it into the ground to be able to make it so that it's down to the ground and.
No, I understand that. What I'm, what I'm pointing out is that the, the construction of the fence not only is it not where it's supposed to be, it's also out of compliance in its height in several locations, meaning that if it were to be accepted as a variance, it would have to come into compliance. Because as it's sitting, as it's sitting right now in some locations, it exceeds that compliance, especially the back half.
Oh, the back, yeah, that one back portion there is.
Right. So, getting to the point that at some point your framing and your, and your construction is going to have to be altered.
In the spot where you're talking about that borders in my storage area.
Well, and, right, and other locations where the chairman pointed out where dogs could just run up underneath it.
That's the same area.
It's parking.
Yeah, it's the same area. There's only one section there that's, I think, sixteen or eighteen feet long that has any height.
Did you put this together with screws or nails?
Screws.
So, you can unscrew the boards?
Those boards, yes.
What about the frame? Did you use hangers?
No hangers.
Or you just put it right on there?
Yes.
Just as I have, quick clarification, Mr. Chairman. In the sections that you're measuring that are above six feet, those, those are portions of the fence that are fronting Cherry Street? Or are they in the alcove section?
Uh, now, knowing that Cherry Street doesn't go all the way back to the property line, it's after, well, it's at the corner of the alcove and then going back to the rear of the property from considering the front of the property is on Sixth Street.
It's past that area that would be considered enforceable by the city code, I believe. Like you said, it's right there on the corner because it goes in about eighteen feet from the edge of the Cherry Street. And that's why that part isn't, isn't an issue.
If it's outside the ten-foot area in, it would be subject to the building code requirements that are seven feet before requiring a building permit.
Right.
But if it's, but if it, you are correct, if it's within that setback area, that, that first ten feet along frontage of Cherry, the maximum height are allowable, like one, six feet.
Well, also the, this one spot that you're talking about that's higher is, is the part that's, I mean, we're only talking about four and a half feet here, the difference between the code and what is built. And from that point, from that corner, that particular corner, that's the only spot which is about four and a half, five and, five and a half feet that has any kind of height issue. The rest of it goes into my property and it wouldn't be under the city's code curvier purview as far as I know. Am I right, Kevin?
Yeah, but I, I think what the chairman is saying is that there are sections that are along that Cherry Street within that first ten feet that are over that six-foot height.
Yeah, that first section that comes as you head south, if you measure from the ground up, is over six feet and then you have another section that cuts through. That, that portion of it is definitely higher than six feet.
What, what part?
Each time it goes along, because those boards are six feet.
Yeah, and we have.
And each time it goes up and it leaves a gap underneath, that means it's prior, it's higher than that six feet.
Correct.
And you're applying for a six-foot variance, but even portions of that fence are higher than the six feet that we would give you for the variance.
And those portions are the ones that the fence is down where it's supposed to be on one end of that section and then the others, by the time you get to the end, because the thing's on a hill.
Correct.
It's on a hill, so therefore, and if I, I'm not going to dig into the ground to put the thing down so that this end is going to be equal to this end. I mean, it just doesn't make sense because your fence is going to be dug in.
Or saw boards, bottom of the boards, so that they go along the ground and then the top is exactly level.
Oh, well, that never occurred to me. That was, it wasn't a concern at the time. And I, I quite frankly only saw one, one part where it was higher than, you know, higher than a number of inches.
Okay. Any other questions for applicant? No? Okay, unless you've got anything else, we'll close the. Anybody else that wants to speak to it in this case?
He was the one chased by the pit bulls. Ask him how he felt.
I was scared.
What?
I was scared.
He says he was scared. I'd be scared too.
All right, so we'll close the floor at this point and. And, uh... Comments? Consensus?
You know, once again, you know, doing it on slopes, it's tough for some people to figure out the heights. And then figuring out, knowing that the height is from the level part to that, a lot of them don't think that either, but it's something like, you know, we're between a rock. And right now, it's built, it's done, I mean... And unless we change the variance to be seven foot, you know, instead of six foot, to comply with that, we can't do that because that-
No. Anything over, anything over seven requires a building permit, which was not, was not pulled.
Right.
So... Well, uh, as, as we discussed back before, I guess, in previous cases, when issues like this pop up, was the city's policy on penalty for it or violations that have been seated and variance not granted?
Well, if, if the planning commission chose not to approve fence variance, it would still remain an outstanding code enforcement issue and subject to our nuisance baiting ordinance. So, it would be potentially processed and notification time for them to remove that if they didn't comply with that. Then there, there are administrative penalties for possible use to the property. Uh, some jurisdictions, um, have policies that allow for a double application fee for violations. We don't have that currently with our ordinance, so we took this in as a standard fence variance permit.
But after?
But after the fact. I mean, with, to the credit of the applicant, we began the time period, we established it with, with our courtesy notice.
Right.
She made contact with us right away upon receiving that notice, so... Um, but yeah, no, I mean, some jurisdictions would, you know, double fee at a time, you know, that, that happens a lot with building permits as well. Where it's constructed without permits, you see that.
We don't have anything official.
We don't really have anything official in that, and, um, the title of this having a fence variance is kind of misleading, and, you know, variance-
Right.
As you guys are aware, is, is something with different specific findings, you know, whether that special privilege is being granted. This is simply, um, our ordinance in our performance standard section does provide these sort of caveats to allow, with, you know, discretionary approval of overheight fences. But I was looking at it real quick. I mean, that discretionary approval is indeed limited to a maximum of six feet of height.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I propose probably, maybe the addition of a, an additional condition requiring those portions of fence, within the required sidewalk setback area, measuring greater than six feet should be reduced in height to be consistent with the performance standards within sixty days of the project. You know, we can, we can figure out in sixty days if that date directly in there. I mean, that, that's an option that's available to you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. It's, it's, it's the same, well, I wish it had been done the first time, honestly, but now, here we go. And so, what's our best option, I guess, is what we're looking at. I, I fall down on the line of the black and white rules of the code, so I'm going to be consistent with that. However, a recommendation that I would have if I were to vote for variance, or in this case, an adjustment would be to, to leave it in its place, but to make sure that it comes into compliance with, as, as Kevin just mentioned, and that any future development be, you know, so required, including plants, that we know. Honestly, uh, my vote would be just to have it removed and replaced because that's what it says. And that's, that's where I fall down. And that's not consistent, and so I'm going to stay consistent. As much as I love you, um, this is a matter of rule, and so I'm going to stay with that. So that's my opinion. Gerald?
Well, with, uh, I don't want to see her have to tear it down and start all over again. I think it's one of these things, again, where we've done a lot of different variances, where we've had to slap their hand, send them down the road, and, and we don't stick to policy terribly all the time, so, um, I say we just go with that. Hopefully, the variances that come along in front of us, we can get them cleared up before they build the fence while they know what they're doing.
So what do we do with the fences that we've been, that we tell them to take them down?
Somewhat we're gonna have to-
And, you know, like I said, at Hartley and Twentieth, we have numerous fence posts still in place. They've been there for almost a year now. They rebuilt their fence with the proper setback, and they have removed those fence posts. They're just sitting there, cemented in place. So, they decided, okay, well, we'll put it where it belongs, but they're leaving the old stuff right in the middle of the street. That doesn't work either. So, and, and I know we've brought this up several times, and it's not a conversation for this evening, but I will inform the idea that at some point the planning commission, the city council ultimately, staff certainly should come up with a concrete way of either preventing this from happening or having penalties in place so that when the applicant is notified of violation, they're aware of the fact that, okay, you have this option, or you have this option. And if you don't comply with it, you may need to have an administrative citation, or we will fine you for what's in place for breaking the code, and we will make it come into compliance. But at least the city at some point will have some responsibility, and the owners will have mobility and responsibility, and everybody gets along, and that way we're all on the same page. As to your point, too many back and forth, and people getting away with it, and some do, some don't, that's not the kind of tone we want to be, and I think that's what we're trying to fix. So, not a discussion for this evening about penalties, but certainly something we should look into for the future so we can at least come up again. We can say, well, here are our options. If it was found out after the fact, you were given notification, you refused notification, therefore, this is what we can do. Right now, we have to sort of make a tough decision. We all have a different thinking, so...
Well, what if, kind of compromise that we allowed the fence to stay, but may come into the six-foot or under compliance? Do you have consensus on that, or?
Well-
I'd be a compromise, I think, on both sides.
I, I will, I will not consent to that, but you guys have the majority in this three, the three-person panel. I'm just going to stay consistent with the code. I think that's, that's important for me to, to stick to that. I'm, I'm going to be as consistent as I can. But your suggestion is, is a good suggestion for compromise. You know, it's a good, it's a good suggestion. But I will respectfully decline that consensus.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion?
Well, categorically exempted approval, I move that the planning commission find the fence variance application F-15-04 as applied for by Suzanne Russell is categorically exempt from the California environmental quality act pursuant to the section fifteen-three-oh-three slash C slash of the CEQA guidelines. And we have to do this in two parts, don't we? Just like we did before.
All right, I have a motion to, uh, for the categorical exemption. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Taylor, and a second by Commissioner Wicks. Let me call the rule.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Wicks?
Aye.
Chair Gaynor?
Aye.
All right, now, uh-
Just a very- Just a quick clarification. So, I just want to confirm that you guys are recommending the addition of, of adding the condition that portions of fence within the required sidewalk setback area measuring greater than six feet shall be reduced in height to meet the setback, or the, the height requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, is it sixty days of project pool? Is that, is that the direction?
And then, and I have a question, clarification. Is this technically a fence variance?
How, how so?
Is this a variance, or is this just a, a condition of approval for existing fence that's out of compliance?
Well, it's still, it's still within, within the ability this commission, through the zoning ordinance, through the performance standard section, to approve this. I mean, it's really, it's not clear-
As a fence variance?
As a fence, well, that's what, that's what we call it as an application of fence variance.
Okay.
Which really just, there are provisions within the zoning ordinance for overheight fences within setback areas, within, within those limits and within the findings that are required for those sections of the code. But yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable with the, we, we call it a fence variance, but the variance-
Right.
-aspect of it kind of gives it a different, a different flavor, per se.
Right, right. Okay, so for this particular motion, it's fence variance application. Okay, thank you.
All right, so, on the fence variance motion, I am going to-
How are we gonna?
Second it.
Well, I'll second the motion. I can still deny it.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll just read it with them.
It's worthy of, of vote, yeah.
Okay, fence variance approval. I move that the planning commission find that the fence variance application applied for by Suzanne Russell on property located at six hundred Sixth Street does meet the requirements of section seventeen-point-two-eight-point-zero-one-zero-point-zero-point-zero slash. Sixth Street does meet the requirements of such, I already did that, consistent with the objectives and policies of the Lakeport general plan and the grant approval of F-15-04, subject to the project conditions of approval and the findings listed in the September ninth, two thousand and fifteen staff report, and is what we just amended, what we were talking about.
Let's, let's answer.
So, a motion was made by Commissioner Taylor, second?
I will second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Wicks. Can you call the rule?
Commissioner Wicks?
No.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Chair Gaynor?
Aye.
Passes? All right. Suzanne?
I have a question.
I'll say it.
The one portion that you're talking about, about it being five feet, and you're saying it's seven feet tall, does the city have any authority to say how high a fence is when it's past the area that they have jurisdiction over?
The, the condition that was amended into it limits the, the area of concern to that area within the setback. So, I mean, your, your areas of fence that may be higher than six feet around that setback area are okay, as long as they're seven feet or less. Because anything over seven feet would require a building.
Right.
Um, but the areas that are within that setback area that are over six feet need to be reduced.
Are within, that, that's fine. And the area that I believe Chair Gaynor is talking about is, is satisfied, I think, I, I know what you're talking about, that particular area. And since I thought I was in compliance, and I thought that I was already in my private property, not under the jurisdiction of the city, that is why that is higher. Because we're trying to block out the house that's up above us for the tenants. So, and that is, so you have jurisdiction over that four and a half feet that I'm sure, sure. And then after that, we can still be below seven.
Yeah, below seven, but not, yeah, because some of that's above seven too.
I mean, you can, you can go over seven. You just need to build a building permit.
Apply for a building permit, yeah. No, I, I get it, I learned a lot about fences. But like I said, I thought I was legal, and I, you know, for what, what he brought up, there is that one small section that there is a, a space there. But past that four and a half feet, I think it's, I think it complies, but I'm not positive. But we'll, we'll work on that.
Work on, yeah.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
All right.
Thank you very much. That it?
Yes.
Okay, so at least that's clarified.
Just make a note that Commissioner Russell is coming back. All right, going on to the next item. outdoor seating in the right of way. Kevin, are you taking this?
Yeah, well, I, we're both, we're both, but I'll, I'll give you just a little brief overview on. This is kind of something that I hope that we can do more in the future. I was hoping there'd be more people in the audience to kind of take up these sort of discussions. But this is just, we're kind of seeking your input this evening in regards to our, our guidelines and maybe a possible zoning ordinance amendment as it relates to a review of sidewalk dining regulations. And, uh, the kind of events that sort of brought this about is we're, we're currently processing a zoning permit right now for an outdoor dining area for an existing restaurant within, within the sidewalk area. But also, you guys are no doubt aware of the downtown improvement projects finally moving forward. We have about sixty percent engineering drawings at this point, and we're actively working at, looking at ADA compliance on a lot of building entries and stuff. Once we've completed that step, we're going to move forward with some public meetings and walk with the council, which I, I hope that they're going to invite you guys as well. They will. But it kind of raises about the issue there as well. We kind of, we want to encourage, you know, things like this you know, things like this where outdoor eating areas, I think that that adds a lot to a community, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're also maintaining an adequate area for, you know, pedestrian access through there. So, in reviewing our guidelines, it became clear that we do have some issues right now with our guideline showing that a minimum of three feet of clearance is required, which is not consistent with the American Disabilities Act, which requires four feet. So, there's already an issue there, necessitating probably to clean up the ordinance as amended. In doing that, we kind of decided, well, let's, let's take a look at some of our other design features and see if those really are working with what we really want to see as a community. And in doing so, Dan kind of did some research, he set out, we have a, a listserv with other planning folks that people tap into to see their guidelines. And we did get a little bit of feedback on there, did some research on our own, and you see, we've kind of included a couple of examples from some other jurisdictions that we thought were kind of appropriate to, that could be appropriate to the city of Lakeport. So, some of those issues include the minimum height of umbrellas, whether or not outdoor furnishings should be moved in each evening. There's a lot of restrictions, not, I would say requirements, rather restrictions from, from ABC, the Alcohol and Beverage Control Board on, on how these areas, these sidewalk areas are designated and cordoned off from other pedestrian areas. Some jurisdictions have minimum distance seating from a corner or minimum distances from parallel parking spaces where people would park right up against the curb and their doors would open out. You potentially don't want, you know, that conflict between an outdoor seating area, which we certainly do have, well, parallel parking on Main Street. And then also, another thing that we wanted to perhaps consider was perhaps maybe different standards for Main Street versus that of other commercial areas, kind of establishing maybe a different requirement for our central business district as opposed to some of our other commercial areas. So, that's just kind of a quick overview that we're mostly soliciting your opinions tonight on maybe other areas that we need to be looking at, or whether there's some of these things that you like, other areas that you don't like, and then the intent behind it is we would move forward drafting an ordinance and, and going through the formal procedure with a legal notice and bringing that ordinance back. Your guys' recommendation and then ultimately the city council's approval.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, like, you know, each, we've got a few restaurants here in town that they put tables out in front of their places and give them a few extra seating capabilities, but what I noticed that they, some of them haven't been patrolling and watching is like, if it's a restaurant to me, and since you're not allowed to smoke in restaurants or bars, then those tables outside should be meant for the seating and eating and not for smoking and, and sitting around. And I, and I noticed one place up on Main Street the other day, when we had the Taste of the Lakeport, even though I know they went and cleaned streets and everything, in that one particular area where the people sit and socialize and wait for their food or whatever, there were cigarette butts on the sidewalk and, not, not exactly something that I would think would be appropriate for outdoor seating area.
Dining.
And another thing, I was in, I just recently had surgery done on my knee in Sonoma, and the day of my surgery, they got put off for a few hours, so we walked around Sonoma. And it's a cute little square area, but I, their sidewalks are eight feet wide, and not only in that square area, and they had some, what do they call the, outdoor sidewalk sales going on. And even with the tables in front of the stores, there was a good three to four feet from there to the curb for people to get by, and everybody could stop and look and not, not bother traffic. And it, it, I mean, there's no way we're going to widen our sidewalks, that's for sure, but it's, I know they plan someday to do a downtown improvement, maybe if we gained a foot or two on the sidewalks, something like that could, could work for us.
Yeah, I think currently, just for information on that downtown improvement project, currently our sidewalks are ten feet on Main Street, and the current proposal at this stage would be looking at widening that up to twelve feet, so we would be getting additional two feet.
So, is that parking diagonal in that design, or is it still parallel?
It's still in parallel. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, that, that two feet of additional sidewalk on both sides of the street does narrow down that road by four feet.
Right.
But yeah, the, the parallel parking is, is still proposed to remain in place as, as it stands today, and that's all, it's fluid.
So, I kind of like, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I kind of like the idea of, of working proposals at one point, I remember a couple of years ago, in, in the concept designs, where a section of the downtown was actually squeezed, I think it was between Second and Fourth Street, was actually squeezed. And so, there's two lanes in that one section with very ample sidewalk spacing, trees and what have you, and then first, from Second to First was opened back up a little bit more, and then of course, Fourth and Fifth was opened up a little bit more, which caused maybe slower traffic through downtown, but would really open up the public aspect of walking around and enjoying the town, or something much like this, I thought that was a pretty good idea. Apparently, that's, it's not part of it because of the parallel parking, but I always thought the diagonal parking was a much more efficient way of parking downtown, instead of getting ten cars on a block, you can get twenty cars on a block on one side. So, but it's good to hear that there's, you know, proposal for widening the sidewalks.
I think some of the challenge with the roadway is also a lot of the commercial deliveries are in that center lane at this point in time, so when you start to raise that center lane out, you kind of, the, the business owners downtown get kind of frustrated.
Yeah, but luckily, Second Street's pretty wide.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to address, was the, that central lane that people, I mean, I'm looking at that and the argument was they can get deliveries from the back end. Well, some of those back alleys don't go, they're not going to be able to service that area. But I also remember a plan from years ago, weren't there bump outs and diagonals?
Those weren't very good, though, they decided that those weren't practical because of different drainage and ADA requirements, and it was real hard to turn cars at certain locations on, on Third Street, so I think they decided to redesign those.
Well, I, I think, unfortunately, the timing of this whole project kind of ran right into, headlong into the whole redevelopment going away.
Yeah.
I mean, at one point, the project was intended to, I think, stretch a couple additional blocks and also include some of those spurs streets and stuff. As part of the dissolution of redevelopment, the city was able to retain some of the funding for this because this project was already in process, but what we were able to retain was a lot less than what was originally proposed, and so, some of those features, you know, including the tabletop intersections, some of the bump outs and things were some of the items that, that ended up, due to the budget constraints, kind of have fallen, fallen to the wayside. I mean...
This is kind of an, an engineering thing. I noticed when I was looking at those sidewalks, based on what, what different things are proposed for the ADA requirements, a lot of the, a lot of the doorways, I mean, you're smiling because you know what I'm going to say. Here's the doorway, and then there seems to be about a couple of feet that it goes down, and then the sidewalk. And so, I was looking at that, trying to decide how you would do that, and not being an engineer, I'm like going, how are you going to handle that sidewalk that needs to come up to meet the ADA requirements when the street is so darn low and those curves, you open up your door and you're going to like tear half your door off, so...
The answer is yes, definitely engineering is very complicated.
I know.
It's been, it's been, it's been the subject of quite a bit, and I'm not going to try and venture into what they, they got going there, but that would, definitely as this moves along, and we do have that meeting, the planning commission and the city council walking through, that would be led by, by Paul Grant, who's our, our city engineer, and, and he will be specifically talking about that.
About that.
Because I mean, it does, it does require a lot of different, different things to bring in, it was not an easy task to bring all those into ADA compliance, but, but we're moving forward on that and done pretty well.
Good. Now, I also had a question about the doors, because I know that with ADA, they have to have certain things, and you could lump open a door, and is that, is that requirement still holding for outside entrance?
Well, I, 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 those are probably appropriate questions to, to ask at that time.
At that time.
Yeah, and Paul would certainly be able to answer that, I'm sure Tom Hall, they're a really official party there as well, I think those are, yeah, I mean, those, those are all...
There's like a hundred, the requirements are incredible, just incredible.
Yeah, poor Linda and Dan have been preparing those lists of which, which businesses have been affected.
Right. And then the businesses themselves will be responsible for that, those doors and doorways?
Well, once again, we're getting, we're getting on topics that are, that are kind of outside the scope of where I wanted this to go, but I mean, those, those are definitely, those are definitely things that are being looked at and certainly be part of that, of those public outreach, because it is going to affect businesses.
It's, it's, yeah.
I, I think it's ultimately going to be an advantage to them, but it's definitely something that they're going to be taken care of.
Any other questions, Carol?
Well, I, I like the idea a lot, I'm a big fan of food, a big fan of outdoor, of outdoor experiences, it's one of my favorite things to do, I don't have very many hobbies, but food is one of them, and I really enjoy the atmosphere of, of bistro style eating, I do. And I've been, been promoting for a long time that Lakeport should get into the business of food and drink and turn this back around a little bit, and I think this is a step in the right direction, honestly. And if we can do this conscientiously and, and make it so it looks pretty and it really works, you know, we don't have very many restaurants on Main Street at this point, but I'd love to see a good version, I think this will help out a lot.
I think some of the areas where we were leaning was kind of, you know, putting together perhaps a, a four foot requirement for maintenance of the sidewalk area, but perhaps a five foot requirement for the central business district of Main Street.
Exactly. The wider the better, I believe.
Right.
Yeah. I think wider the better is the best, you know, as much as you can get.
And, and the, you know, the, where there's going to be more pedestrian influx is going to be along South Main Street.
Right.
You know, whereas the side streets aren't going to have the popular, you know, the traffic, pedestrian traffic, that, so a four foot would probably be adequate more of those places, locations.
One thing with it, and I don't know how it would work in, I was walking, actually my wife and I walk all the time, and we were walking down this weekend, and one of them had a couple of tables and chairs out there, but then they had a sign in front of those, so you only actually had a two foot to walk through area.
Well, and they're not supposed to have the signs, right? There's not supposed to be sandwich boards.
Yeah, and so, there, there can't be both, I mean, you, I wouldn't even mind a sandwich board during sale, you know, for sales or something, right next to their door, but to have it out there in the three foot of walkway.
Well, you know, at one time, we did have a conversation, I believe it was a year or two ago.
I think we did about those.
We had a conversation about that, and one of the suggestions was that in the application for restaurants that, or putting up signs or renovations, that it was clearly spelled out in the application, that the, of the signing, that they understood what the rules were, and number one was no signs out of compliance, including sign boards, flag or flags, and all that stuff.
Yeah.
And so, if they're signing that and it's on record, it's a matter of the community development department just walking out saying, you can't have that there, I'm sorry.
It, it does address the feather flags and the banners.
Right.
It doesn't talk about the, I don't, I don't believe the sandwich board is on...
It's in the ordinance, the, the signs of the sandwich boards are covered in the ordinance.
But it's not on the business, I meant the business license.
Right, and we talked about adding something, that'd be very clear, that when they were signing, and we were talking about perhaps having an annual review, so when the person comes in and says, hey, you know, I'm upping my business license, they get that sheet, you go over with the sheet, are you in compliance, 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 yes, great, sign it, everything's happening.
If there are specific areas where you see a lot of these things, there's signs and it's, you know, impeding traffic, just let us know, we'll send some letters out to some folks.
Yeah, there aren't that many, there really aren't that many, you know.
Yeah, and we pretty much blanked out.
Yeah, no, we can certainly look at making sure they get sand.
This, you know, looking at these regulations, which are really, they're well done, I mean, they're, and I've looked at a couple others online from different cities that I like to go to, and they're, they're all pretty similar, but they include as much as possible for the understanding of, of what the regulations are for outdoor seating, including gated in areas, like you say, the ABC thing, that's kind of the deal, because you have a couple of bars here that would love to have outdoor seating, but you have to make sure that they have a crowded area, which is different, because then you're talking about holding in metal into your, your sidewalks, there's a whole different thing.
Well, I always enjoy doing, doing, doing cooking in bars because I get to work with these, you know, they tend to have quite a bit more teeth than I do.
They, they don't mess around, yeah, they don't, they don't mess around with folks, so, but this is a great idea, and I think a good roundtable discussion or two from all parties, wherever they come from, would be a very positive step forward, I think it'd be great.
What were some, just out of curiosity, some of the other communities you looked at, did you find anything?
I looked at Redwood City, I looked in San Francisco, I looked over Seattle, Washington, they used to live there, I like to keep in touch with friends up there, I look at places where they're really, you know, Calistoga, look at Calistoga, they don't really have anything outdoors, but they have the width for it, really interesting.
Which is odd, yeah, they should.
Yeah, they all have kind of a different take on it, sometimes like Calistoga wanted a way to be inside, but they do have the ability to put it outside for special fans, whereas other cities like, you know, Seattle, they're, they're promoting it, you know, they, they want you on the streets, they want to see people active and eating and happy and moving, and, and so, you can kind of pick a tune between what you want, but...
Well, one, one item that we didn't really cover here is the whole, you know, park lanes, too, I don't know that that would necessarily be covered in this, you see it, probably the most, the closest example is Ukiah, where, where Shotts is now, they've actually, their restaurant includes the conversion of a parking space or two as an outdoor eating area.
Oh.
Well, that, and this is why, and to tag into that, why I was asking about your street designs, because if you have a diagonal design, it, it may impede on some of the parking, but, you know, you can get a much greater space instead of one...
The loss, the loss of one or two spaces.
That's right.
That's right. I didn't really put that in there, I, prior to my employment hearing, you recall there being a pretty intense debate with the Bus Shelter win in here.
Yeah.
About the loss of just one parking space, so I kind of have avoided those items, but I mean, I think, you know, there's certainly areas in our, in our general plan that would encourage those sort of things as well, but I don't know if that's something we would want to tackle in the White House.
We do want, we can't discriminate until the other bars and restaurants, and there's quite a few bars and restaurants, I mean...
Well, you know, food for thought as well.
We were starting a zoning permit for all outdoor seating areas, so there's a requirement, there's a process they have to go through.
You know, and to that point, what I was going to mention is that, you know, taking the step forward, which is, is a great improvement, you have to think big picture as well, our current parking orientation would not necessarily facilitate groups of people in many cars finding immediate parking, they'd have to park somewhere else and walk to the place, which is a good idea.
Right.
Then you got to look at where they're going to go, so hopefully down here, what have you. So, you know, there's a lot of issues that go around initiating something like this, because if you've been to Santa Rosa on Fourth Ave on a Friday night, and it's really popping, good luck, that's why you have parking structures, you know, it, it gets really full. We would love to have that problem here, wouldn't we?
I've always been told that it's better to have a parking problem than not.
That's right. So, yeah, let's, let's cross our fingers that's the case, but I think this is, I think this is really good, and I'm, I'm looking forward to those conversations, there's a lot of good ideas that can, you know, win you this application.
And as supporting of the sidewalk dining application, I think the tutti-frutti that we approved is, is a very good example of how a business can be improved and generate more business.
Yeah, and that, that certainly could be used as model, it's a little different in that it's private property, but you got to correct, it's, it's the same, same sort of...
When you go into that parking, into that little shopping center, I, your eyes are immediately drawn to the tutti-frutti, and I, I think it's an excellent idea, and I agree with you, I think we should have more, I know Angelina says it.
Certainly draws in my four-year-old, though.
So, here, just as a question, how, how would this impact, because we did this last year as well, when we were talking about mobile vendors, how would this particular idea impact normal vendor ordinance?
That's a separate, yeah, that'd be a, under a separate item.
It's a separate item, but they have a hundred and twenty foot distance requirement at this point, and so how does that impact that particular, I mean, that's something to think about.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're, they're required to, to move every couple hours or so, but you mean as far as if they end up stationed right, right in one of these areas or something like that?
Because now you're extending it out into the street, which impacts a little bit more distance, because it's a hundred and twenty feet in circumference, right? So, if you're actually extending it out into, eventually maybe into the street, then you have a different thing happen, so how's that?
As we're looking at it right now, I don't think we were looking at maybe adding any provisions for, for the street component, if we did that, it'd probably be, I would assume probably even a separate zoning permit, you know, for, for a parkway or something like that, so...
Well, because you might have somebody eventually, let's say you get, because they're very involved right now, you get a couple of folks that are really good at their, their street food in their, in their facilities, and these are hundred thousand dollar trucks, they show up and they park, and I want to put tables on, you see, so...
Oh, I see.
That's a whole different game.
Well, and so, does that also apply to this idea of application?
There, there is a separate permit for out, for, it's not under the zoning ordinance, it's under the county code for the food, the food vendors.
Right.
We could look at that as part of, if they're going to bring their own tables and chairs, we could kind of see if we could roll that into it, it probably still have to meet a zoning permit to meet the standards, even if they're bringing, building the table, like with the standard that we're looking at under our zoning permit process, it just hasn't happened yet.
Right, because I'm thinking maybe like, you know, down by Sixth and Seventh Street area, all those sidewalks in there, you get, get a bunch of trucks in there, and they want to put out some chairs and seats, and we have something like this in place where you have the ability to extend into a sidewalk area, does that apply? I guess that's my question, so something to think about.
There'd still be a requirement that they meet at least a four foot clearance, and some, where you get on Sixth or, you know, some of these roads or sidewalks, you know, they're narrow.
Are you talking Sixth specifically?
Well, we're talking about the...
Side streets.
Or Main Street.
Side streets, right, I mean...
Forget it, we have one, one side parking on Sixth.
Well, right, but we're talking about improving Main Street now, but think ahead, I mean, think ahead, right, think fifteen years down the road, if this works and people want to come up here and start investing in Lakeport to put in a bistro, we should have something in place now so that they know exactly what they want, because good restaurateurs don't mess around with, with hokey rules, they want to know what they're getting into right now. And that's part of why we don't have enough people up here, is because we don't really have a clarity, and so they go to places, that, that does happen. So, just to, again, food for thought for, you know, more big picture.
I think we want to encourage restaurants.
Oh, absolutely, and did you, did you notice that TJ's is re-leased?
Yeah, no, we, we're just, we're related.
Yeah. That, what is interesting about that, I was talking to Phil Smalley at CPS, and he says that the new owner is going to be specifically targeting the over thirty crowd, and I thought that was quite interesting, because a lot of the restaurants around here do seem to appeal to the under thirty crowd.
That's not very smart, there's not very many of those anymore.
So, just getting back to the sidewalk, aside from them smoking?
Oh, yeah.
Did the criteria were on the right path, or?
I think so, I didn't see anything objectionable personally, I thought there were some really good recommendations in here, until you have an actual roundtable discussion where you can vet some of the stuff out, but I think the concept is sound.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll, we'll go ahead and move forward with, kind of what, during the draft ordinance then for you guys, and obviously we'll come back to you guys with another public hearing.
One other question, too, are, for example, Park Place and Angelina's have a little date or fence that they put out, well, like, Park Place is, is permanent. that they put out, well, Park Place has its permit, but Angelina's pulls it back out during the day. But there are some that don't, some that are, they're just chairs and side, or chairs and tables are right there on the sidewalk.
Pizza guy.
Yeah, and so we need to, do we need to enclose that so that people aren't just walking by and?
Well, that's, that's one of the concepts that comes up, is do we require them to have removable barriers and make those move in at the end of the day so that the sidewalk is then available again? It seems that most jurisdictions do require that. The Park Place, right now, their outdoor eating area is on their property, so it's outdoor. So I mean, they, but as you know from your projects, they're applying for this outdoor eating, that's one of the, one that brought this whole discussion up. But that's, that's a concept, I mean, how do you guys feel about that? Is that, you know, say you're on Main Street, I mean, if you had two or three of these eateries, I mean, it could easily start impeding upon that. I mean, is that something that we want those, those facilities to be moved in at the end of each, the close of each business day?
Well, I, from my personal input, I think that's the smartest thing to do, because you're looking at Fourth of July, Memorial Day, bigger events, parades, and you don't want to have those in place, so it's easier to just grommet the frames in place and pull them up at night and take them inside, and be done with it, you know.
Because we're looking also at the fact that, you know, especially when you start talking mobile fences and all, we want to make sure that we still maintain that four-foot. So how do we mark the sidewalk to, so when they loop it out each morning or something of that nature?
Right, so if it's permanent, that they know.
They don't go out and exceed it.
Right, and then that may be, I'm just, I'm sorry for hogging the thing here, but that may be where you come up with a specific standard for Main Street and Central Business District, that's to, this is the type of rail that you will use so that it's all uniform, so it all looks the same no matter where you go. It could be different colors depending to the business itself, but you have a design that's in place that's consistent for everybody, and that way you can just drop it into place where you need to go, and the city can mark it, so everybody knows where it goes, the building department verifies it, and everybody's happy.
Sounds like a good idea, to keep it consistent, I don't know.
Yeah, keeps it clean.
Keeps it clean.
Well, because we look at, I like that idea of like, having a hole that you can pop into, but there could be some issues with having a hole in the ground on a sidewalk.
Well, you know what I'm saying, an idea, I'm sure there's a way that you can figure out how to, you know, set it into place, I'm sure there's something that can be.
Well, yeah, you can put a cap in there when it's out, just put a cap that you just step on.
It's so small, you know, it's only half an inch, it's made of steel, you know.
Good idea.
Any other discussion on this? No, looking forward to it.
I want to clarify, on the smoking, what was the decision, that there's not going to be smoking?
Right, no smoking, I think right now you're not supposed to smoke.
Is it probably 20 feet or something like?
20 feet, 20 feet, and so I think that still applies.
Well, we'll take a look, I'm pretty sure the state law prohibits it.
Prohibits it all.
Yeah, but I agree, I mean, it gets done anyways.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that.
If we re-clarify it, it's.
I'd like to have it in the.
The proprietor and patrol.
Right, but see, it gets very hard when you're talking about a bar, because that's what folks do. You know, they're going to be out at night. But you can all give it a shot, you know. All right.
So, last one is comments from staff.
If I may, honorable chair, I'm looking at your submitted development memorandums, thank you very much.
Yes, amen to that, that's wonderful.
Projects pending and such, I appreciate that. In looking at Evan's job here with the re-roofing, I like the idea. I kind of wish that it had come before the planning commission, however. I have a question regarding the, if it was even considered that there needed to be an improvement for sidewalk curb and gutter on that property, seeing that it's on ex-business 29, right in the middle of a primary walkway for all the kids coming out of high school and into Lakeport. And so, I understand that this is a small project and it's a re-roof, but it's a substantial re-roof, it's not a, not a flat top.
Well, it wasn't a re-roof, it was a.
A complete construction, so I wasn't too sure, I mean, I looked up everything that I could, and I know the rules, but I was kind of hoping that this would come before us so that we could take a look at it, so that we could vet some of the questions. If staff is confident that everything is in place and no such requirements for property improvement were needed, then I'm happy with that. But I didn't see anything in here that said that, you know, there's a major business going up on a major thoroughfare, does this require curb gutter and sidewalk?
Well, I mean, it would still have been, you know, regardless, they're still under, if they make additional improvements to it over that five-year period, it would trigger that.
Cap.
That cap area there, but staff took the opinion that it was just, when it was an existing business that we were putting a roof on to, it was a flat top, and so we didn't think that it grows to a level that would have required any of those things. Because we flirted around with it, I mean, it did come up, and there were some stormwater provisions that we were, that we were contemplating too, whether it grows to the threshold of including those provisions as well. But it was, we decided that it, you know, was an existing business, it wasn't changed to use so much as just a new roof, it's a significant roof. But that, you know, that was a staff decision that I hope that it didn't raise up today.
And secondly, the color, not to, not to put too fine a point on it, but stark white and red building right in the middle of browns, grays, and greens is a pretty interesting choice. Staff feels pretty good about that color selection, or just, what's your thought about that?
Well, opening the subject is sort of a larger sort of provision, I mean, one of the things that I was hired for was with some of this mandate to kind of improve some of our business relations and things like that, and that comes up on a regular basis of how deep we get into color selection, what I, what projects we require to go to the planning commission affects the timeframe for the permitting of these projects. I'm not saying that that's, that you're incorrect, I mean, I, you know, I, I probably, if it was my building, probably would have chose some different colors myself, but there was a conscious decision on our part not to press that too much to kind of, sort of, you know, kind of allow the business owner to his thing. These things come up regularly, in fact, we, as we move forward with our spare influence application, before last call, we received a letter from the county that talks about our owners' architectural design standards being unfriendly to business. I mean, there's a balancing act that needs to come into play, so I mean, yeah, I mean, I talked to Evan personally about it, whether or not the light was, we expressed our concern that, you know, that the light has a tendency to probably become dirty over time. He provided us with different information about the grades and the color, and how it was designed to not show dirt and things like that, so we kind of, we might have moved forward based on that. Yeah, I, it, it was, we did go back and forth on whether or not this project would come to you guys, and I think that, and it was also one of the reasons, I think, that we want to get these projects in front of you, so that we can identify them early on, which ones you guys feel may, may come up to, something that you guys would like to see.
Well, I appreciate your candor, thank you very much. Again, thank you for the, this is great.
That's all Linda, that's all.
Thank you very much. The only other suggestion that I would, would place on this is perhaps, if you have a red flag issue involved, the chairman, whoever he or she may be, as soon as possible, so that they have a heads up on the issue. We've had that in the past where some of these things, not this one in particular, we've had some things show up where we're given a very short notice on some pretty work stuff. And with this list, which is great, we can actually, in this case, the proper person, the chairman, can, you know, take a request from one of us, and get it to you, or do it themselves, and say, what about this item? And then get all the information right there, and that would be great.
Certainly, and yeah, I think that is, that's kind of the point of moving forward with it, so that you guys can identify those. I do apologize, Evan's would have ended up in your hands at that July, or August planning commission hearing. He did it, I'd probably have been easily emailed without you guys, but I think it kind of slipped through, so I do apologize for that, I should have gotten your guys' hands a little sooner.
It's okay.
What is that threshold right now for sidewalks, is it 53,000?
It, yeah, it changes, it's, I believe it's 55 or 56.
55, 433, I think is what it's at.
I know it goes up.
There's a note on it right now, where, I mean, so I mean, if he comes in for additional improvements, it gets added on.
Right.
But there's some very notable exceptions that are eliminated from that 55,000 cap.
Well, yes, yeah.
Very expensive notable exceptions.
Yeah, A A improvements being one of them, there's more, yeah, there's a number of exceptions.
So the homeowners don't have to really worry about going over that cap, like, because there's so many things that are taken off of that that can be exempt from that 55 cap. Well, I do have a question, because Commissioner Wicks and I were, have discussed in the past, you know, the whole design of the town and how it looks, and once somebody paints a building, you're, you're going to be looking at that color for a long, long time. And not everybody has very tasteful choices. And I was wondering why we don't have a design review? Because I know that Jason at the paint store, he had to submit, at Benjamin Moore, had to submit all these color samples and all the other stuff with all of his plans, and fortunately, he has good taste. But I would like to see that extended, and I don't know what that would take to be able to initiate us being able to have a design review on buildings, colors, styles.
Right now, you know, commercial building paint permits are administrative approvals, so someone came in tomorrow, or to paint a building on Main Street, they would need to submit those paint and design colors to us for our approval, but that's an administrative approval. If, you know, like the.
So we get to yell at you?
Yeah, you can yell at me, absolutely.
A garish color?
Absolutely.
Like my favorite purple.
That certainly comes with the territory. But, you know, for larger projects, the architectural and design reviews that raise to a level that come to you guys, you guys certainly do have a say in that, in that color design. We require the material, or those colored boards and material board and such.
But there is a unique part of the downtown that represents kind of a historic look.
Right.
And I think, you know, Kevin and I would be focusing on maintaining that kind of historic appearance. I think any significant change other than, you know, than a historic look, we'd probably forward it to you.
Yeah, specifically with the downtown area, I'm not too pretty optimistic.
What we were, what we were talking about is overall continuity for the, what we consider the north-south avenue of Lakeport, which starts at the High Street, works its way all the way down to the Boulevard. And our conversation was, it's nice to have the variable designs where there's a business district and what have you, but wouldn't it be nice if there was a little bit more consistency in the color palette from one end of town to the other, so it makes it more appealing? That way you don't get these very stark, you know, hits.
And we were, there were, there was kind of a preliminary view for a project down on South Main, and we drove around town trying to get some ideas for the design concept, if there is a kind of a design concept for the area.
You know, we relied pretty heavily, there was a, with the redevelopment agency, there was a facade improvement program, there's a lot of good architectural stuff that was behind that, we looked at that very carefully. So I mean, we do take it pretty seriously, but at the same time, I just want to make you guys aware that there certainly is a balancing act, and, you know, I feel that there's a direction for both the city manager and the council at this time to kind of, you take a look at those approaches, and there may be, I think the leaning, and I mean, certainly you guys are a huge part of the, you know, this movement in it, that, that some of our design standards may be too strict. And you guys could certainly disagree with that, and I think there are certain elements that I probably disagree with myself as well. But I, you know, I think, I just want to make you guys aware that there is that political sort of, whatever conversation out there.
Thanks, I'll leave for you, we don't have that.
Why do we have you?
Sometimes when you get a design concept, you get kind of buried into like, one area, like you were commenting earlier on the tutti-frutti up there. I've worked in jurisdictions where we would just look at that and go, there's no way.
No way.
It has to be, it has to be a pastel color, earth tone, stonework, that kind of thing. You know, and if you want to go that direction, that's, that's kind of a significant change. But we're trying to find a balance.
Commissioner Wicks brought up a good point in talking about the restaurants, how they like to, you know, come in and know what their standards are. And that may be the avenue that we want to take, I think that applies roughly to all businesses. I don't think that there's necessarily an issue with having standards. I think the issue that comes into play is the discretionary review of those standards. So I think the more, I don't think there'd be any problem with us tightening guidelines as far as including additional information in our application, establishing those standards. I mean, if we went through and did a specific plan for an area and developed design standards that were specific, I don't think there's really any, I don't think there's political backlash on that. I think where the problem comes is, you know, kind of like, in the case with, for Isaac, for instance, where we recommended approval of something, it was approved here, and then we get to a different level and it changes. I think that's frustrating to a businessperson, the discretionary review, because then a lot of times that adds more time. So there may be, there may be a way to achieve both, but I think we definitely get at half that, that we're rightly or wrongly are not friendly to business on some examples.
You know, I, just, the general plan does provide for a fast-track system. I mean, that's part of what we amended, is to try to do, and give the staff as much leeway as possible to make those good decisions. And I think in the most part, we all agree that staff is doing an exceptional job at doing what they do with the minimum amount of personnel and time that they have to do it, so that's not really a complaint. If anything, I think it's, you know, good common sense always kind of wins the day, and regardless of what a lot of people think, if common sense says, don't put a round building next to a bunch of squares, then you don't do that. Same thing goes for, don't put a black building next to a bunch of beautiful red, you know. So common sense comes into play, and if someone says, you know, I'd love to build this here, and I'd like to have it this color, and you look at it, if you're getting political pressure because you're trying to get something in a business but not being practical about the overall appearance, it's going to come back on you, because people are going to reject this building, regardless of the fact that the city got somebody to put something in. So, I understand your balance, but, you know, you do have the ability to fast-track, and I mean, we are happy that you have that. I think we're just voicing common sense objections to what we see as obvious, you know.
Well, and I, and I hope that you guys do, you know, utilize those, utilize those, the project listed.
We really appreciate it, it's a very good idea.
Yeah, I went through it, and I thought it was great, you know.
And at future date, planning commission meetings, we could maybe throw out some ideas to get some design concepts, if that's what you're like, or what you're pushing for.
If it's necessary, I mean, I mean, honestly, if, I think, again, I'm sorry to demagogue here.
No, only if it's necessary.
Only if it's necessary, I mean, you guys are professionals, you work really hard at this, you have a really good pulse. You have a, you have a good pulse on what this town is doing, what it's trying to achieve, and I think that, you know, well served for what you get paid to do, I mean, we have all the faith in you. I think in a bigger sense, when you're looking at the gray areas, obviously you're going to bring it before the vetting board, and we're going to try and.
Well, this, this is a good transition, because one of the things I wanted to ask you guys this evening is, you know, kind of like this discussion we just had on the outdoor seating, are there any other topics that you guys feel are worthy for us looking at? I will say, you probably have one coming your way in regards to signs, we were informed by.
I was going to say, I was going to say signage.
We were informed, well, specifically, in this case, we were informed by our city attorney that, given the recent Supreme Court decision, Mesa versus Gibson.
Whomever.
Whomever, there are some conflicts that probably exist within our ordinance right now in regards to that most recent Supreme Court decision versus content-based signing and stuff like that. So, that's something that we're. So, that's something that we're going to have to approach, so I mean, that, that issue will probably be coming for you guys sooner rather than later. Dan and I have kind of looked over the ordinance and I think there's a couple of quick fixes that I'd like to see. One of the things that came up in Evan's that I didn't like is, we approve it administratively, but there's not really an avenue for anybody to really know that we approved it. And so, I think one of the things we're looking at is, a lot of jurisdictions will provide notice to at least adjacent property owners, if not within a certain radius, notifying them of a pending decision if there's any, you know, and I think that might be a way to catch some of these smaller projects where we can administratively approve it unless there's a, you know, a desire by a neighboring property owner or property owners within a certain area to review it, and at that point get it automatically if requested by a neighboring property owner, raise up to the level of planning commission.
What about public notification, just in the newspaper or on the radio?
Well, it's not required.
I'm just saying.
That's a lot more.
Right, okay. I just thought it'd be easier than.
My, my suggestion, a website, you know? A lot of cities have, you know, open source websites where everybody's plugged into what the city is doing, and the city could very easily set up one page where all you have to do is list with a, with a link to project particulars.
Just little, they say, "Project approved".
Eighth Street, such-and-such address, boom, and if they're really interested in it, they can click on it and the project description comes up, and if they're interested, then they can make the contact, and that way.
Well, I've seen a lot of jurisdictions take kind of our, like what we have our project listing and have those, you know, up there and you can click on it.
Do we have, as a question, does City Hall have bulletin board for this stuff? Or any place where people can see it if they walk by, or do they have to come in and physically ask for it?
We post notices on the bulletin board up in front, but we don't really have enough room I think to end up with it in front of the person. But, yeah, I mean, mostly, but I, there's no problem doing it at the website.
Right.
But, yeah, most folks would need to come in and request to see it.
We could do another bulletin board right in front of where the office is, because you've got that whole wall there plus a couple of chairs. It could be put there.
That's a lot of work though.
Take a long area, like, say, you have a whole set of plans.
Oh, no, I didn't mean that extent. I'm just talking a list.
Oh, okay.
I think the website's a pretty good idea.
Oh, it's perfect.
Just add it, then you can just click right on it, under the community portion, they go, "Community", click on it, current projects under review, bang. It's so simple.
Not everybody is computer literate.
No, but that's where we're going.
I know, that's where we're going, but.
That's where we're going, and if that happens, then we'll do a lot more of it.
Not everybody is there yet, nor do they want to be there.
Any other topics of streets?
It's always a problem, and I go to all the meetings for sure, but, and I'm not sure how it's going to work out, but I notice a lot, having used the working streets, people filling potholes in rain and using hot mix without filling, cleaning out the holes and stuff.
Yeah.
And.
You mean private property folks?
No, I mean city streets.
City folks, city streets.
And I know this is something for Mark to, to address, but there are some streets that are really bad shape with new pothole fills. They're just dumping it in there and they're just, they're overfilling it, and they let the cars run over and it's getting bumpier and bumpier. So, I don't know if this is something for Mark to address or, but I've noticed a lot more caps on the, on the potholes, larger than it should be.
Yeah, probably more Mark will certainly pass it on.
Right. And the larger question in the streets is, you know, the funding's not there and it's just a big mess, so not much to do about that.
At least they're getting filled. In all fairness, I have seen them scoop out the stuff.
Some.
But you would know better than I.
Yeah, I've watched them do it, and, you know, it's not every time, it's not every time. But, you know, perception's everything, right? So, we get the signs done, we get the streets cleaned up, we, you know, some of that stuff. The only other, the only thing I would bring up this side, crosswalks. A lot of complaints from constituents in town about unmarked crosswalks. People apparently have forgotten the rule of intersections where they don't, where they need to have it, strip it.
Right.
However, and a lot of folks in the last couple of months talking about, "When are we going to stripe such-and-such street?", and this and that, and that. So, I don't know if that needs to be addressed or not. Passing that along.
Another item here, and you'll have to forgive me, I'm on a learning curve on it, but it's been brought to my attention that I'm used to chair elections being in January, however, our chair elections occur fiscal year, and so we're a little bit overdue. But there was a.
No, we changed that to December.
That's changed to December.
That's your guys' is, and so we did some investigating, that's your guys' reappointment period is all changed to December.
Oh, you bumped the actual chairman.
But our actual chair election of a chairperson and vice-chairperson is still subject to Planning Commission Resolution 73, which talks about being in July.
July, and we didn't have anything in July. The resolution says July.
We were not in July. We were not at session in July.
Exactly.
Right.
We overlooked that.
So, my, my suggestion is, I'd like to change it to January. I think that seems to be kind of what the intent was with the elections and stuff, so we'll probably bring a resolution change next time for that, for your guys' consideration, but then we probably should still do a chair election and vice-chair election for our remaining three meetings, I guess, for this year, so I need to be all cordial with it because I think the resolution talks about not exceeding over a year.
Ps and Qs. Ps and Qs.
So, I'll bring that, I'll probably bring that on our next one, just to clean up one. We realized it to be out shortly after getting this agenda out, so I didn't want to clutter it up.
Actually, I think we brought that up this last.
We did.
And I think, and I thought, and I was with you guys, I thought that the answer was that we had formally changed it to, to January.
Thought that's what it was.
Looking into a little deeper, that was a city council resolution for all committee appointments. They got them all, because they were all staggered before, so that they all end in, and so that reappointments would be done at that first meeting in January. But you guys have your own separate rules and resolutions that you guys passed that did not get amended to reflect those changes, and it still says that your chair elections for an annual basis are in July.
Planning Commission resolution.
Yeah, not a state council resolution, but an actual fiscal planning commission.
She just made it amended so it's annually, not fiscally, so that's all on the statement.
Sounds good, because Suzanne's been waiting to fill that chair.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Suzanne has that, that covered. And she's sitting at the end of this.
And lastly, Chair, just on my list, just a quick update in regards to the appeal of the Verizon decision. You guys are probably already aware, it's been a bit, but just the, the city council did approve an additional continuance to December 1st, to allow the applicant some time to look at the courthouse site. But they did have quite a bit of dialogue in there that they were not in support of the existing site going forward, so we'll see. It was so fun. We're going to do it again in December.
I thought there was all that they could handle up there at this moment.
You know, I, I don't know the specifics of it. I mean, in, in my discussions with the county, they told, they said that there was a small area that's still available on the courthouse for a modest size. You might probably need to revise the proposal. They also suggested that the jail building, the old jail building, the VA building that sits back behind the courthouse is also an option. There's some.
There's nothing on that.
Yeah, well, that's because there's, I mean, you'd have to.
Tall tower.
Tower to overcome the issue that the courthouse sitting next to us two stories.
And the fact that the engineer is looking for a tower that's not a half a mile away from the corridor that they're currently looking.
Yeah, that's.
But they're, they're aiming north.
Well, you were there. It was a long, it was a long three-hour deal.
It was a very long.
They were, they were looking for specific criteria, and they thought they had found the criteria, but now they're, they're asking for it, working with the city for a 90-day extension to try and come up with a compromise in lieu of other actions, we'll say.
They're primarily interested in the north, north.
Right.
So, in other words, the courthouse might not be as big of an issue as one would think it might be.
Well, like the engineer said, if you're in a dark room where you put the light right in the middle or off to the side, they can try and cover as much as they can with their gap. So, what they would like to do is put it as close to the middle as they can, the inference being that the courthouse is a little bit more away from the center than they're comfortable with, but we don't know at this point.
I think the lesson overall learned for, for the planning commission moving forward is, we'll probably need to look at developing our own telecommunications ordinance, our own public ordinance, so as this moves forward, there's probably something else that staff will be thinking of.
Yes, right, and I will go to the specific conversations. Kevin and I have had a discussion on this matter according to certain language that was discovered, and I sent him an email showing specific locations within the municipal code, which he knows, but also in the general plan that directs the city as to telecommunications in the economic development plan. Now, it is only a small section, but it does infer that it needs to be enhanced and improved upon and be encouraged, so he's absolutely right. Going forward, with the, with the infrastructure being tentative at best, we should probably, the city, we, the city, we, the city should really look into more comprehensive telecommunications ordinance that clears this thing up, because those towers are only going to get more and more and more, and they're going to be micro-towers, and there's going to be all kinds of stuff happening, and pretty soon.
That's a good idea.
It's going to be, you know, they're going to be all over the place, so we don't really have anything in place, so.
Yeah, so that's something that's, I think, you know, well demonstrated.
Very much so.
Never a shortage of things to do.
The list keeps growing.
Do you have five people up here just waiting to do stuff?
Oh, yeah.
That, that's all I have to report. I think I've.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner?
Nothing.
All right. Next meeting is October 14th. With that, I would adjourn.